Board members, if we could please get back to the table, please. Board members, if I can ask you to come to the dais so we can start our work session, please. Good evening. Ms. Darnett Kofax, I believe you're chairing this session?
I am.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And welcome, to those in the audience, to tonight's budget work session. Tonight, we will not have a formal presentation by staff, but staff is here tonight. This is the time we can ask questions of staff regarding the superintendent's proposed budget, as well be, as well share with your colleagues to, if you're beginning discussion on any amendments you might be considering. As I said, the superintendent and staff were here. We have the proposed budget that we went over, this presentation we went over in our last Monday work session. And so it's here for reference as well. So colleagues, I will begin taking questions. And yes, we are using the light system tonight. All right, I will start with Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Ms. Kofax. I may have to leave early, colleagues. There's a community meeting in the Braddock District over at Fairfaxville Elementary, so what questions I miss of yours, I'll make sure to watch on the video. But I did want to begin the budget work session, hoping that Ms. Burden, you could maybe walk us through a little bit more details from what we got at the most recent budget work session on the proposal from the superintendent to make some changes to the bachelor lanes. In particular, I know that for many of us, we're very pleased that the superintendent is looking for ways to honor and restore the steps that our current employees, when hired with their bachelor's degrees, came in with an expectation. But there was definitely some questions that were raised about trying to better understand between steps 23 to 29, that are now, I believe, the new 23, and therefore then getting an understanding of how that impacts also the differential in pay between a bachelor 30 and the master's degree. Because there is definitely quite a change from what we've seen previously.
Sure. Well, actually, there's not a huge change. And in fact, we tried to keep the schedule that was proposed as part of the fiscal '20 budget, the original one, that was the endpoint of salary schedules that was proposed back in fiscal '17. So we tried to keep our revision as close to that as possible. But recognizing that there were some concerns about, you know, having the short schedule for the BA, the consolidation of the BA 15 and 30, and those sorts of things. So when we came up with our revision, we kept everything like it was, except for we will have 23 steps for all teacher pay lanes. Steps 20 to 23 for BA, BA 15, and BA 30 have been added back, so that is a change. Teachers at the top of the scale will receive a 1% bonus in fiscal '20. In subsequent years, if there is a MSA that is included, that would apply to the entire schedule, even those at the top of the scale, so a bonus wouldn't be needed in future years. The number of steps continues to be reduced for all employees to provide faster career earnings, which was, you know, one of the, the original goals. The plan for consolidation of BA 15 and BA 30 will no longer be considered, but we did feel like we needed to make, to differentiate somewhat between BA 15 and BA 30, which is why you see that additional $500 all the way down to BA 30 lane. With this revised proposed teacher pay scale, grandfathering will be unnecessary because all teachers will be on the same scale. The revised schedule has an increased cost of about $1 million, and we're recommending an increase in the beginning balance, coming from the current year to fund it in fiscal '20, and then it would be built into the baseline in future years. I think it's also important to point out that the intervals between the BA 30 and MA, although those are small intervals, I think it's important to mention that the difference in credentials between a BA 30 and a master's is not that great as well. My understanding is it's about 36 credit hours for a master's degree. So BA 30 compared to that is not, not a huge interval as well. Now, we do have some BA 30 staff who have academy credits instead of university credits. And for those folks, that would, that, that's a little bit different, but I think that's an exception that we made for those people.
So just a little more clarity, and I appreciate your response. So in terms of, when we were looking at it at the work session last week, the crosswalk and the side-by-side between the bachelor 30 and the masters, at around step 20, there was about a $15,000 pay differential per year. But then, once it gets to step 23, the differential in pay between the BA and the masters is about a $3,000 differential. So I'm trying to understand, as questions are coming in to me as a board member, of why it looks so, why we have that pay differential of 15 grand, and then all of a sudden, it almost disappears.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. That is another change that we made. The BA 30 lane had 29 steps previously. And so in order to make all of these 23 and not consolidate the BA 15 and 30, we had to compress the BA 30, 29 to 23. It's BA 30. Yeah. And so as a result, that compression, but still ending up at the same endpoint as we had already done for the master's degree and above, results in larger, larger increases because of that compression.
Okay, so, but in terms of benchmarking this with our two largest school divisions, Loudon and Prince William, that are neighboring to us, and I don't expect you to have it tonight, but I did want to find out, was there a benchmarking to look and see how our bachelors, bachelor's 30, and masters all compare? And the reason I'm asking is that, as Dr. Braibran and others have noted, more and more teachers are going through a five-year bachelor's/master's program before they graduate. And so I just want to make sure that any changes that have been made, that we also still continue to be competitive in attracting and retaining those teachers who are arriving to us with a master's degree.
Yeah. No changes were made to anything from the master's degree and above from the original plan, as that was implemented over the last couple of years. I do think it's important to say that, you know, the Loudon schedule has 30 steps on it, and the Prince William has 27 steps on it. So we, you know, if you compare to those two divisions, or even just compare to the Virginia divisions, we do not look that far outside the market. I think that the original comparators included a couple of Maryland divisions and DC, all who cut their BA lane at 10, 12, and 16, respectively. And so those short schedules skews the average so that our longer schedule looked like it was well above the market average. But, you know, how many teachers we have leaving us to go to Maryland when they've already been a part of Virginia, the Virginia retirement system? That's probably the exception, not the rule. So if you look at just the Virginia divisions, we compare pretty favorably with those in fiscal '19 and fiscal '20, as far as what we've projected for those divisions.
Okay. I'll just end with that. I very much appreciate Dr. Braibran, the fact that for many of us on the board, even some were not yet on the board when, when we made some of these decisions with the prior superintendent. And the biggest concern that we came out of that prior proposal of the salary scale changes was that those teachers who had been with us, had taken positions with us, were well past their 15 years of service, had anticipated that they would be earning, within their career, with their bachelor's degree, up to a certain number of steps. And when those were removed, that created the biggest challenge. I'll maybe check with you, Ms. Burden, before our vote next week on the budget. I just want to understand a little bit more detail about, at one point, we were told that the bachelor's lanes, you know, were, had gone up to 23, but now 20 to 23 was being eliminated. So the 24, step 24 to 29 about the bachelors is where I'm trying to get a little more historic understanding.
They didn't exist. 23 was the top step for bachelors and BA 15.
And BA 15, but in BA 30, they went all the way up to 29. And that's, but now that we're not going to make a distinction between BA 30 and BA 15s, that's why it's going to look very different. So in fact, for our BA 15s, isn't it this a real improvement from what they, when they were hired, and what they thought their earnings potential would be?
Well, staff is looking at that.
Depends on what you compare to.
Oh, that's okay. So Ms. Kofax, I know you've all been patient letting me try and walk through some of those changes. To my colleagues, I'll just say that I hope you understood the reason I wanted to walk through this is this is going to be a very important part of any changes we make to the budget. Our employees certainly have done a great job of communicating their concerns to us. I just know that we want to get it right, because I don't want us to find ourselves revisiting this again, and causing that uncertainty for employees. So this has been helpful, and I'll get a little more information as needed.
Okay. Dr. Braibran?
If I could to just summarize, Ms. Burden did an outstanding job on it. We're accelerating earnings earlier, right? We're accelerating earnings earlier overall when we did the salary scale changes, but our BA teachers felt like we cut the limb from them. We cut steps out. We put those steps back in. Now, we really, what we did for BA 30, we had consolidated that. We brought them back to the lane that they had. But to do 23 all the way across, because BA 30 was the one that we had the 29 steps, we compressed all those years. So we've, our BA lane folks, our BA lane folks are even seeing those accelerated earnings slightly earlier now under this, that they would have had to have waited out. So our BA lane folks across all, BA, BA 15, and BA 30, are getting more steps and a chance to have accelerated earnings earlier, which was part of the board discussion, I feel, that there was the penalty for not getting the masters. And that's what we heard from our BA lane teachers when I had the town hall in Robinson last year, where hundreds came out and said, "Why are you penalizing me? If I knew 20 years ago that you would make those tweaks, I would have gone for a masters earlier." The change wasn't communicated, you know, should have been communicated years before. And by the way, the specifics that you were taking away our steps, we had no idea. And so that's what we've tried to really restore. Even when we brought the potential solution to you in the fall, where we'd have a grandfather and have people on one scale go to another, we made it too complicated. We Fairfaxed it, right? And to me, it was going back and making it simpler, bringing back the lanes, bringing back those steps, and getting everybody accelerated earnings earlier, including those BA 30, who really are getting steps that they had to wait, 24, 25, 26, getting in on those first 23. So we really, really helped support the notion that a BA is a, BA teachers need to feel valued. We did develop cohorts, and we encourage people to have masters, and that's great. But if you're in a BA, or a BA 15, a BA 30, we want to value you too.
And if I may, and if I may, Dr. Braibran, one of the things with the elongated scale that we had at one time is that we had hold steps, where employees would sit at a step for two years before moving on to the next step. This new scale has eliminated those hold steps, so employees no longer have to sit for two years at a particular salary rate. And so by compressing that, you're getting to the endpoint much sooner, but you're still getting to the same endpoint. You're just not having to wait that additional time through hold steps for your salary to increase.
One last thing, and maybe I don't know if I'm saying too much, which sometimes I do, but career earnings, I know for a fact, because I read the, the information in the budget session, that Loudon has studied our career earnings, and had, had been happy that they were reducing the career earnings for their teachers to ours. Our teachers were, were, our teachers at, but our teachers over a career were making $300,000 more over a career, being in Fairfax than in Loudon. Loudon had worked to try to narrow that down and had cut it to half. The presentation by the superintendent this year shared that that had been re-based on the work this board did last year, that we had expanded it back to a $300,000 career gap. So it really is making a statement, not just to value the people that are here with us, but to attract those who want to come to say, "Where do you want to put roots down and put your career?" And if you're going to be a career educator, and we want people from all backgrounds, and we want people to come to us at different stages even in their life, but if you know in your heart you want to be that teacher, and you want to be an outstanding teacher for the lifetime of your work, we want you in Fairfax. And starting your career and finishing your career right here, this set of scales reinforces those accelerated earnings earlier, much earlier now than we had had, you know, in years past.
Are you good? Because I know you need to go to a community meeting.
Yeah, I will just, one last thing I did want to bring to my colleagues, but I need to talk with Ms. Darnett Kofax, and Mr. Moon is the budget chair and vice chair. I, I may, Mrs. Strauss, I'm sorry. You're, you're our vice chair all around.
Well, thanks for elevating me.
So I, I am considering some language as a follow-on motion that addresses the issue with school nurses. It would be more about, hopefully, the idea of having the superintendent, the school board, and the board supervisors working on the delivery model we currently have in place for our school nurses. I feel that the board has been sensitive to the fact that with almost 190,000 students, we only have 66 nurses. I recently heard, again, just the other day, that even in our high schools, because our nurses are trying to visit and serve so many schools, 66 nurses, 200 schools, they're not even in a high school every single day, serving almost 3,000 kids. So I just want to prepare you that I'm going to be working on that language. The reason I like the idea of a follow-on motion is that it's something to work toward. It's not about a budget thing, but it is budget-related, and I think it's time that we finally start working on it. We've been, for so long, told we need funding from the state. Well, the bottom line is the state only gives us about 22% of our operating budget. So solving the issue of school nurses is really more something at the county level that I think we must start committing to. I think our board has the ability to have a voice on it. So I will get that language and send it to all of you for your consideration.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I didn't say this because I knew Megan had a meeting. We are going to follow the three-minute rule. That's why we have a clock right here. It was the rule that we all agreed to during our work sessions. So what that might mean for your first go-round, you might be able to get one question in, and, or if you just want to have the staff not answer, and just do two or three questions, and then let the staff answer, we can do it that way. But let's really try to keep our eye on that clock, and don't make me be that mean taskmaster. So next, I have Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the main concern I have is in reviewing the new needs-based funding formula, and I have put in a question about that and the specific impact on different schools. The fact that the, the ones that were most impacted negatively are some of our highest poverty schools gives me pause. So that's one thing I do want to focus on. I do have a couple of questions. I also am concerned about the loss of '20 or '21 Title I positions. And I believe Ms. Corbett Sanders will be asking some questions too, and we very well may work together on an amendment to try to restore those positions. But predominantly, I'm interested in both the impact of needs base, of the Title I, of ELL funding, to make sure that our, our highest poverty schools, our highest need schools aren't negatively impacted. So I guess this is a question for you, Dr. Braibran. Is the formula itself actually in this budget, or, or is it the money for it? Because I think we need to have another conversation about the formula. So is this a placeholder? Is the dollar amount a placeholder? Or when we approve the budget, if we approve your budget as-is, do we approve the formula too?
Right. If you approve the budget, you approve the formula. Obviously, as we go through advertise and to approved, if there's tweaks to the formula that the board wants to make, we, we certainly can. But yes, the formula is how we built this budget.
Okay. So I think we need to have a much greater conversation about that, and it's something that we're not going to be able to talk about in depth before next Thursday, when we approve the budget. But I, I do expect to have the answer to my question, the very specific answer to the question, because if, if that comes back with negative impacts on our high-need schools, then I am going to have an amendment to that. I mean, I'll just alert my colleagues to that right now. And if this is the time that we have to amend it, then this is the time we have to amend it, even if we only have a couple of days. So I hope that that question can be turned around quickly. And I think my, my time is almost up, but I do have other questions, but I'll, I'll hold them off. I'll just say that I have an interest in working on the support employees' compensation as well. Mr. Swan came and talked with us, and so some, some of those employee groups are, are of interest to me as well.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And, you know, as far as our budget process is, as you know, we're not approving it till the spring. So as far as our budget process is, you know, if, if your amendment isn't ready right now, because the answers aren't there, you have time to amend it. I'm saying, this is, it's good, this, that's what I was hoping for, for tonight's conversation, alerting each other, you know, about where we're going. And if it's not ready before we approve, I think that's okay. Where we approve this proposed budget, I think we're okay, because we can continue to have conversations after that. I mean, ideally, you know, that, but...
Right. I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think that this is, this is actually the time when we're presenting our budget to the board of supervisors.
That's true, as well.
And I think that it should be in as, in as fine a shape as it can be, and not all of a sudden be trying to change it, and perhaps having to add money at the end. It's, it's better to add money now.
All right. Thank you. I have Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then Ms. Strauss.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burden, I'm, I'm focusing on the budget answers. So I'm actually in that document, the budget questions. And thank you for all the answers that we've gotten. I know we pepper you with questions, and some of them are quite detailed, so I appreciate what we have here. I'm going to go ahead and run through my understanding of some of the answers, and I'm going to be making some assumptions. So if you don't mind just following me, since my time is limited, and let me know if any of my assumptions or understandings is wrong, that would help me, okay? So beginning with, I think it's on page 18 of the budget question document, it's the question about the position for a get-to-green coordinator in facilities. My, my question included, and we don't have the other part of the answer, but that's okay. I think I asked a question about three positions for get-to-green. One in facilities, and two in instructional services. And what the total bill would be to make those three positions full-time permanent. And so it looks like the position in facilities would be $0.2 million. And I'm, I'm guessing that the two specialist positions in instructional services would be between zero, a total of $0.3 and $0.4 million, assuming that a full-time equivalent position is somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000 each. So I'm guessing that if we were to fund the total, three full-time positions for get-to-green, the total between facilities and instructional services would be, would not be more than $500,000. That's my guess, okay? I'm going, I'm going to move on from there. And then I also am guessing that the, hiring a full-time AART for our Title I schools, and I know we've asked that question, and I don't see the answer yet, but that's fine. I'm going to make a guess, because we have 46 Title I schools, and we are currently funding a half of a half a position at every school, if I'm correct. To fund the other half a position would be 23 full-time positions, so I think that would run about $2.3 million, if I'm not wrong. So, let me write these, if you don't mind writing these down, and then I'll get my answers, if that's okay. Also, if I understand the answer on page 10 about the living wage to $15 an hour, I think it looks like that will cost us $0.3 million. I think that was the question Ms. Palchuk asked. And then finally, I'm almost done, page 19 of the answers, and I'm sorry if this is hard to follow, I'll have a go-back. On page 19 of the budget questions, I asked a question about lowering the proposed subpay to get it closer to market average. And if you look at page 19, it looks like doing that would save us $0.4 million at the bottom. So, do I have to have go-backs, or can I get answers to whether I'm correct?
You can get answers.
Okay, thank you. Am I right on all of that?
Okay. On the first one about the get-to-green, I mean, you're probably in the ballpark at .5, but the rest of the question, is a pending question. We're in the final throes of that, so we'll get that to you. But yeah, you're in the ballpark. As far as the AART, that too is in the final stages of approval, but if we did all Title I, that's 16.5 positions, or 1.6 million? And you just wanted elementary? Okay. And, what was your last question?
I was just...
Oh, the living wage. Oh, no, the subpay.
The subpay. Looks like the total savings from what I've asked would be...
Yeah, $400,000.
$400,000.
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Burden, for all of your hard work and the work of your whole team. It is greatly appreciated. I did want to just briefly make a comment about the work that's been done on the BA lanes and how important that is to, as a board, I feel that we should be moving forward on it. And the reason is, is that historically Fairfax County has always been the place that paid our career professionals in teaching a professional wage, and we always strove to be at the top of that, of the earnings. This allows us to be within the 95% and 105% of market scale, but also honors the relationship and the commitments we made to teachers when we brought them on. And that is really important as a school system for us to do that, because as we face a nationwide shortage of teaching professionals, we want to be the destination for professionals. We want to be the place that the best and the brightest and the most talented professionals want to come and work for us. And by doing this with the BA lanes, I think that is going to be very important to address the concern that many on this board have been advocating in asking important questions in this area for the past couple of years. So, thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for doing that. I do think that we will be restoring our place as Fairfax County Public Schools being the destination for the best and the brightest teachers as they come out of schools, and that they want to stay with us for their whole career. I do want to know a bit more, and I have posed some questions on how we can address the concerns that our IAs have brought to us, as well as our ESPs. And so, I look forward to the response. I know that, Ms. Burden, you are working on that, and so I appreciate it, because I think that's an area where this board will want to, in the same way that we looked at our teacher pay with intentionality over the past several years, we may need to have a strategic plan on how we address the concerns of our IA community. The additional one is on Title I, and I look forward to a response to that question as well. And with that, I will cede the rest of my time until we get to some other parts of this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. I have Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. Kezgamar, and then Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. I have commented two questions. One, I'm glad that we're getting rid of the whole steps, and it's interesting, because whole steps as a concept for salary scale, that was traditional for, I don't know, forever. So, I do support what you all are proposing for the rest of the salary scale. Two questions. I believe is Herndon, are Herndon Middle and High Schools slated to get the Avid program? That's question one. And then the second one is Title I and supplanting, since Title I is a grant from the federal government. What are the rules for supplanting with the Title I funds? I believe we have greater leeway, because we can set our own formula for how we distribute that money, but is there an issue with supplanting? So, that's my Title I question. And Herndon getting Avid? Thank you.
No, it is not Herndon Middle and High. I think it's Herndon High and Lee Middle School. Key, Key Middle School.
Okay, but at least it's Herndon High School.
For Avid.
Yes. All right.
It's Key and Herndon, not Herndon and Herndon.
Okay. And then Title I and supplanting.
My understanding of supplanting is that, you know, we can't get additional Title I funds and then reduce our local funding and use those Title I funds to cover something that we're already doing, which is not the case with Title I, because those funds are going down, not up. We have a work group that is looking at Title I very closely right now, made up, of course, of the instructional folks and the finance people, to see where we are currently in fiscal 19 and what the future might bring. But we're not ready to discuss that in any detail at this point.
Okay, great, because the question, I believe one of the questions with Title I is if we use Title I to decrease class size? And if we are decreasing class size in other schools, do we then get ourselves into a supplant situation?
We don't use it to decrease class size.
Okay. That was what I had, that's what my understanding was. Great, thank you. I look forward to the answers that my other colleagues have asked with Title I. Thanks.
Ms. Kezgamar.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up, I wanted to follow up on a question from our budget hearing last week, and it had to do with the MA lanes. A young lady was concerned that she was at the top of the scale, and she said that there's some changes had occurred, and she was concerned about how that might impact her retirement income. Could you clarify or explain what has happened? You may not have the answer to her question, but I did want to make sure we posed that question.
Yeah, we're still looking to that. I mean, we had a similar question with an analysis by FEA that we have had a chance to take a look at. No changes from the original proposal in fiscal 17, or the final scale, have been made to the lanes that are MA and above. Those MA earnings were accelerated in fiscal 19, and then that's maintained in fiscal 20. There is a slight decrease, if you look at it over time, like somebody who's on step 23, and like a three-year average, but it's a couple hundred dollars. It's not a huge decrease. Over what, if we had never done anything to the schedule, what would have happened?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that that person's question was addressed, and if you feel we need to have additional information, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we can look into that.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Palchuk, followed by Mr. Moon.
Thank you. I do have some initial questions and areas I'm focused on, and I know I'm waiting for some budget responses, but I do definitely appreciate the ones that have been posted. So, a couple I'm still waiting on are around the staffing for custodians, custodial staff, and the contracts for IAs. A couple of questions I have from what has been answered here, go back. Number one, going back to the MSA versus the bonus for our top-of-skill employees. I knew it was brought up already, but mainly, I know you've given some analysis. I guess a little bit what I'm not seeing here is more of the impact on the employee side. So, for instance, my understanding is that as long as we've been trying to fix the teacher scale, the salary scale, we have not given an MSA to those employees who are at the top of the scale. We've done bonuses, I believe, two years, if you could remind us. And so, I would, A, want to know what it would, how long's employees have not seen an MSA increase to their salaries essentially been on hold? And so, I would like, I know I just lost the number of the difference, I believe it's $200,000 difference between the MSA and the bonus. And my understanding is, A, for employees that they see in their paycheck much smaller amount and/or a difference in the way it's taxed, the MSA versus the bonus, so I didn't see that in the response, and would like to hear that...
Yeah, that's what this sentence about salary sensitive is, that a bonus is not subject to VRS retirement rates, ERFC, those kinds of things. And if it's an ongoing salary, a recurring salary, then it is subject to those things, and that's the $200,000 difference.
Okay, right. But I mean more in the way they are then taxed on their salary, not what's going into retirement. But the difference on the employee side, say IRS sees it differently.
She's, I think, may I?
Yeah.
I think she's asking, if you got a step, right, for say, $1,000, but then you got a bonus of $1,000, does the $1,000, because it's a bonus, have a higher tax rate where the employee gets less take-home from that money as a bonus than if it was just simply a step increase of the same amount?
You know, my gut reaction is no, but, you know, if that $1,000 jumped them a tax bracket, I mean, it's, I don't have that information.
So, if we could get more information on that, since we're certainly in the process, that would be helpful. I also, I know in the last conversation it was said, I don't want to go over my time, that half a step was difficult. I guess I wanted to get more analysis on that in writing, because I've heard from many employees, they would rather do a half or even a quarter MSA versus a bonus. So, if we could get that. I have two more questions before my time ends. Well, the other one is, I do, I see the response to the living wage question. I appreciate that. It does look like the $15 an hour is only, would only be a small increase. I know last year when we looked at this, there were a lot of questions around how it affects the scale and what that means moving forward. So, I guess I'm happy to provide a formal question, but wanted to bring that up, because I would like us to see how to get our employees to the living wage. And then on the Metro Bus Pass, I know it says it's a county thing. If our staff is able to get more information from our county partners as to, it's called a pilot program, and my mind of pilot is to eventually expand it. So, if we need to do that, or if our staff can help us figure out plans and possible avenues forward, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. I'll try to do within my three minutes. If not, I'll ask for the go-back later on.
Most appreciated.
Okay. As to the overall budget, I'll be supporting it. I fully assume that, expect that there will be some amendments from both, from board members, and just like Ms. Palchuk and other board members, that I'm waiting to get more budget questions answered, including a living wage-related questions. I was looking for the amount, if you were to do 2%, or 3% more above $14.83, which was...
We do have a response to $15.1680, which I asked.
And the others...
The other was 2% and 3% above.
And the others are in the queue, and they will be posted shortly.
Okay, and then depending upon what I get, you know, I may just have my own amendment or work with somebody else to work together. And, but more importantly, Mr. Ryan McElvin and I have been working on to propose a follow-on motion, to be proposed, obviously, after we adopt, we're voting on superintendent's proposed budget, and the follow-on motion has to do is basically, what Mr. McElvin and I are trying to accomplish is this, working toward ultimate budget guideline to be adopted at the second meeting in May, when we vote on the final budget. Superintendent, as we all know, that as soon as we are done with the next year's budget, the following year's budget cycle comes up. So, as superintendent develops FY '21 budget, what are some of the things that he should consider in relation to our continuing efforts to recruit and retain highly qualified teachers? I'm glad that the superintendent's proposed budget include large amount of money, perhaps not large enough for most of us, but enough money to bring the salary level of our teachers to market level. However, just being on the market average, whether that is going to be enough for our school system, whether that should be our ultimate goal, I think that should be a part of discussion going forward, and I would like start having that discussion, discussion from April timeframe. So, my follow-on motion will be seeking a superintendent to bring back some of the things that we should consider, as we make further efforts to continue recruiting and retaining highly qualified teachers. I sent to my colleagues a proposed language for the follow-on motion. I would like to hear your feedback by the end of this weekend, so that I could have the language posted for public sometime early part of next week. I just want you to know that I have also shared the language with FEN, FCFT, and waiting to hear their feedback as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Is there anybody else before I do go-backs? Mr. McElvin.
Thank you, and I just wanted to follow on Mr. Moon's remarks about our joint amendment looking to the future, but I do want to ask staff, you know, this has been a multi-year project that we've been engaged in to bring our employees up to market scale. After this year, is it your view that we will have achieved that goal?
So, we'll have achieved the goal that you worked with, with my predecessor, to get between the market average of 95% and 105%. I think the question that is before the board, and I think it's a question we need to reflect on too, I have been thinking about it, is that where Fairfax needs to stand moving forward, to be market competitive or to be the market leader? And really being over and above for all the positions? I mean, I remember when I first came here, I was a career switcher and was an intern. I was a social studies teacher, and people were telling me, you know, "Good luck. There are going to be 50 or 60 applicants for the one social studies position, and you may need to go spend some time in another system, because that many people are going to compete." I want to have those conditions again, even if there's a nationwide teacher shortage, even if there's a Virginia teacher shortage, that there's not a teacher shortage, there's not an IA shortage, there's not a bus driver shortage, because Fairfax is the leading school district for paying people, for supporting people, and then creating the conditions, pay's important, but also the support, whether you're in a school, the support by the principal, whether you're in the central office, the support by administration. You've got to have both. I think we can do more than just be market competitive. Honestly, that's just my gut, but we were behind. We were behind as a school district, and this board worked with my predecessor, Dr. Garza, to get us caught up. We're happy to be getting caught up, and I think it is the future discussion of where do we go from here? Is it enough just to be competitive? And I don't know whether finishing the race by a nose is enough to win. We want people knowing almost it's open-shut case, there's Fairfax, and there really is no, there's nothing else. And I think we're getting that... And I think we're getting that back, but we've got to really look. And, and, and part of what I think maybe happened too, we had so many scales and so many positions, we've got to go back, and this is frankly what I see the board doing now, where did we maybe miss it a little bit? Where, where are there some positions that we didn't quite get done as well as they could be done? And I, I think we are certainly willing to do the work with this board to make sure that it's, it's done right.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for using my three minutes. It was a yes or no question. No, but I do, I do very much appreciate the answer. It was an excellent answer. And, you know, I think, reflecting on what you said, I think times are different, and it's even more, more important that we lead the region, if not the nation, in terms of teacher salary than it was when you first started, just because of the teacher shortage. And Jen, then just very briefly, because I under, I know I'm at my three minutes, thanks to Dr. Braybrand. I, I do agree with the remarks also about our support professionals, and I'm grateful to Ms. Palchek's budget question about the living wage. It does seem like a very small, small push for us to get to $15 at least, so I am hopeful that that's, that's something we can look at. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate it, Dr. Braybrand, your lengthy answer. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. I just actually, maybe I should just follow up directly with Mr. Moon, but I just read, read his, Mr. McElveen's follow-on motion, and the, the question I had was, would you, would you also want to include some of the specialist categories? Because we've had discussions about salaries with respect to specialists, like the speech and language pathologists and others, and, you know, somehow addressing the compensation issues related and other, with, with regards to those subcategories of professionals in the schools. And in, in regards to some of the teachers, I think there are also some subcategories also that, that maybe we need to adjust to make sure that we can attract the very best in some of those subcategories.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, you know, but at the, at the end of the day, I, I need to have a seven votes for my amendment. So, you know, more support I can get from my colleagues would be better. So, again, I'm, I'm seeking input, feedback from my colleagues by the end of this weekend, so that I could have something posted.
That would be mine. You've now received one person's input.
All right, before I do go-backs, I just want to share with my colleagues that I have two budget questions that have not yet been answered, and once I get an answer, I will probably be adding amendments to the budget with language similar to, well, similar to this, but I, Ms. Hines asked the question, and, and Ms. Hines and I will hopefully be working together to try to find funding to cover the cost of hiring advanced academic resource teachers. I was hopeful we can do it in each of our elementary schools, but I think, given the preliminary number that Ms. Burden gave, I think that's going to be too big of an ask right now. But, you know, this is a, what I feel is an equity issue, and it has been a recommendation from our AIPAC committee since 2014, and we haven't yet funded that, so I think it's high time we begin. So, Ms. Hines, I'll be happy to work with you on constructing some language for that. Another question that was not answered yet is to allocate funding to cover the cost of adding safety or stopping devices to any movable walls that are currently in operation at our schools. And this is a direct result of, you know, what, I, I, I think it's just, it's imperative that we really look at this, to cover these costs for these safety and stopping devices. So, once I get an answer to that, if it's a reasonable cost, I will be asking, talk, calling around to my colleagues, asking for support on that issue. And with that, let's go, do go-backs, and right now, I have Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Hines, and then Ms. Palchek.
So, I just wanted to follow up a little bit more on the living wage and some of our, our support employees. I, I also have a, a budget amendment in, which may be somewhat redundant with Ms. Palchek's as well. But in terms, we, we also heard, in addition to the IAs, the concerns about that, we heard, we heard that the scale was reduced at the top by $4,000. I guess first I would ask, is that correct? That the, the scale for the IAs was reduced at the top by $4,000, is that true?
I, I don't know, but we do have a grandfathered scale, though.
I'm sorry, we have a?
A grandfathered scale with CIS.
Okay. Well, I, I would say that if, if we did indeed reduce the, the scale for the IAs by $4,000, that's something that we really need to review. The issue of behavior innovation, innovation specialist intervention specialist was raised as well, and, and that's an area that I think we need to be looking into. I do think it's time that we raised everybody up to the living wage. Now, Mr., I followed up with Mr. Swan after his testimony, and he had recommend, he, he wanted to put $40,000 in, and he did explain to me, but I'm not sure I understand what that $40,000 would do for us. I, it, it can't bring out, what, he said that Ms. Burden, that you had given him that number for keeping up with a projected living wage, is that correct? Is that what that would do?
Yes, but that's, that's not right. The $40,000 is assuming the same group of people would go up an additional amount that he proposed to me.
So, just the people who are now at the?
But more people will jump into the group, because they'll fall under the new standard if you change the standard from 1483 living wage to a higher level.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Then more people would be under that.
So, that would only be a, it would only take care of a, a small piece?
The, the existing ones that'll be going from 1450 to 1483.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, that's about $40,000. The rest would, between, between 2% and 3%, it's another, about another $300,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, how much?
About $300,000. So, the total.
And $300,000 would, would cover what exactly?
Would bring that living wage up to $15, a little bit more, or a couple of percentage points.
For, for everyone in our school system?
For everyone that falls under that threshold right now, or in fiscal 20.
Well, I, I would be very interested in looking at the details, and, and again, I, I did ask a question which, which may be redundant with, with Ms. Palchek's, but I would be very happy to work with anyone else on the board who's, who wants to have a living wage amendment, because I do think it's time for us to, to, to take care of that, and particularly to take care of our support employees.
All right, Ms. Hines, followed by Ms. Palchek.
Thank you. So, when I finish, if someone could answer this question, which is, just to remind the public, how, by how much amount we are counting on the governor's proposed budget here in Fairfax County Public Schools? So, in other words, if the governor's proposed budget is not passed in the general assembly, what will we lose? If I could not lose my time with that question, but maybe if you could answer it at the end of my, that would be awesome. Thank you, just for the sake of the public, and I forget. Yes, I want to work with Mr. Renat Kofax, I'm figuring out if we can get AAR, full-time AART positions in our Title I elementary schools starting this year. Thank you. And on the living wage to $15 an hour, and this is interesting to me, it, to get everybody to $15 an hour minimum, it would cost $300,000. And if you look at the question I asked about substitute pay, and I know this is a little bit tender, because we got in trouble a couple of years ago for lowering substitute pay, but the proposed raise to our substitutes, and these are our, I believe, our retiree subpay, right? People who retire from the school system. The proposal is to raise their hourly rate for short-term and long-term subbing, and my question was to just cut that proposal by, I think, $2 an hour is what I did, for each of those. And if we do that, they will still be making $18 an hour for short-term subbing, and $24 an hour for long-term subbing, and by going to that amount, rather than the higher proposed amount, we would be actually closer to market, the going market. At the proposed amount, we are well above the going market for subs. And so, it would bring us closer to the going market, but still be well above, I think, the going market, and I don't have the numbers right now. And it would save us $400,000. Now, if we can save $400,000 by being a little bit more conservative in our substitute pay increase, and use that $400,000 to help our employees who are currently working full-time for less than $15 an hour, that seems to me like an appropriate trade-off. So, that's just something I put out there for those who are thinking about an amendment, to bring us to the $15 an hour.
All right, Ms. Palchek.
Do you want me to talk about revenue?
The governor's budget, what, what would we lose?
My apologies.
It's about 36 million for the governor's budget. We did get some positive news earlier this week, in fact, you know, you got to hear about the Red for Ed march, that the House Appropriations Chair has signaled that the House budget will include the 5% salary increase for teachers. That's not all of the 36 million, but that's a big chunk of it, and we still have to wait and see about some of the other pieces that are lottery money, at-risk money, they're smaller pieces, but they're still important dollars that we need. We do need the governor's budget to come through if we're going to be in a strong budget position this year and not have a gap. As I reported to you earlier, when I presented, you know, we're talking a gap right now in this budget between what we know, the county transfer and state of just a little under 3 million. So, we, we need the governor's budget to come through, and I'm hopeful that there, there are some encouraging signs, but there's still some other pieces that have not been nailed down. We're continuing to work with Michael Malloy, our executive team had a conference call with him today to, to get updates and to know what we can do, and of course, anything that we know that we need to bring your way, we will as well around funding issues.
Thank you. So, those wonderful people out there who are advocating on behalf of our schools down in Richmond, keep it up. This is only a relatively rosy budget year, because we are expecting that help from Richmond, right? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know those of us who made our way down there on Monday, it was just enlightening and heartwarming to see the whole Capitol filled with red. So, I, I do hope we get updates when we hear from the Senate side especially. A couple of follow-on questions from what I've been hearing, and so, the first one is clarity on the proposal for living wage, and maybe I misunderstood, but what is listed on the budget response, says $200,000, I'm hearing $300,000, so just wanted to see where that difference was, to bring our employees up to the living wage. My other question and ask would be definitely, you know, as we're waiting for more on the IA scale, I would like to propose to Mr. Moon and Mr. McElveen that we incorporate follow-on for our, to look at our IA salaries, also just working conditions, we've heard some concerns, I know some haven't been addressed, but many are still there, especially around professional development and access to resources, and just, so wages and working conditions for IAs, I would ask that we try to incorporate that.
Okay, thank you. Could you also send me an email in the regard?
And then, I was waiting more responses, but since you've brought that forward, I will bring that. And then, my last question from Ms., is on Mr. Renat Kofax's recommendation, my understanding is that those devices would be physical devices, so that, could those be part of a, it's one-time funding, I believe, so it could maybe come from end-of-quarter funds, you know, not necessarily operating budget?
As I'm not sure the amount at all, I, I, I don't know, Mr. Plattenberg, if you've worked on answers to that question yet, to see the amount? Or, or, you know, if you're not ready to answer, that's okay, but we'll wait for the budget question to come out. So, you know, I think you're right, it could be a one-time fund unless there's, you know, but we'll, we'll have to wait to hear the, the total amount, because I, I, I don't know how many of those walls exist, nor do I know the cost of adding the safety devices, I would be guessing at this point.
Okay, thank you. And, and perhaps something, well, anyway, look forward to hearing more, and maybe something to consider. And then, Ms. Burden, I don't know if you have a response to the living wage?
So, I can, I can give you an answer to the living wage. So, we have several questions in about living wage at different rates, so there's, people have asked for 15, 15, 13, and, and different rates, so what 2% would look like, what 3% would look like, so that's, there's a range, and so, Ms. Burden was falling sort of in the middle of that range, but we're developing or answering those questions, and we'll be posting those questions, hopefully, this week, tomorrow. With clear answers to all of the different ranges that people asked about.
So, you'll just incorporate the answers that were posted for mine with all of them in one?
No, they're, they're separate questions. And so, you, yours was about 15, but we have some that were about different rates, and so, those will all be posted.
But to clarify, the question I asked about 15 includes all employees being moved to 15 or above, correct?
Yes, and you will see in the answer, well, and your answer shows all the different groups of employees, and we've done the same for the other questions to show what that rate would be.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Does anyone? Dr. Braybrand.
Just a comment, I mean, and this board's just done such an outstanding job with this kind of thing. There's several questions around what that floor should be, and there'll be numbers, and so, in the end, it's almost like a menu of how high do you want to go, and what's the cost? And I want to remind the board too, that in the budget, I have those staffing initiatives, that, that, that 6 million, and I gave you some ideas, I, I, I share the AART, again, that's already been brought up as one, which is getting costed out, but that's some room in there for you to help create that menu of what you want, including how high you would want to go on the floor, and what the cost associated with that. So, keep that in mind, as you all are doing your own dialogue back and forth, and sharing each other's amendments, that there really is some room in this budget for targeted staffing, so that you all could have an opportunity to really put an even deeper imprint into what we've already started in this budget. So, we're looking forward to working with you on this, and, and we know we'll come up with something that we'll be able to do for the living wage. Thank you.
All right. Can I ask everybody who, who hasn't, who's spoken and doesn't want to spoke to turn, so I know who my next round of go-backs are? All right, thank you. So, I have Ms. Keysgamaro, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to follow up again on one of the questions from our public hearing, and I, my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin, it's question number 12, where she referred to the staffing ratios for resource students in elementary, research teachers in elementary schools, and there's a regulation with respect to middle and secondary school teachers, that they were to teach no more than 150 students per week, and it has more language, but that gives you the basics. But it appears from your answer that that is much higher in elementary school, up to six, I think it's about 600, and I'm wondering, have we considered perhaps meeting that same standard that we have for middle and secondary school in our elementary schools, and what it would take? I realize you may not have an answer, but if you, to the extent that you would like to explain why we are where we are, because she reported in, during the public hearing, that she has up to 600 students per week, and how burdensome that is, and, so if you'd like to make any comments, I'm not expecting a full answer, but I am concerned about that issue.
Do you want me to, I can take a crack in the very broad, or do you have specifics that would be better? Ms. Burden?
Go ahead.
Let me try the, let me try the broad. We've done staffing differently for elementary schools versus middle and high. In fact, Ms. Evans, I know one of your questions, and we will get the answer, so you can see every single school on the old and new formula. We're really trying to take your existing policy, not new policy, and give it up front. We were not dividing by the numbers that we should have at the time we did spring staffing, we were holding some of it back as part of the reserve and then doling it out later. We did lower the floor back down from 25% to 20, which was a question from the earlier one. But it all gets to, we really haven't treated the elementary staffing world the same way we have the middle and, and high. We've had something, we've called it Triple T. It, it's staffing aimed at specials, music, art, I want to say PE's included, Marty, you're the elementary guy.
Yes.
And, and we've given that, the Fairfax way has been, we gave that as just a, a barrel of staffing for the principal, and then you figure it out for your school. Whether it went to art, whether it went to PE, whether it went to foreign languages, we were trying to do world languages. I think part of what has, so- I think part of what has, so one is traditionally, we've given that to, my three minutes is up, Ryan. That's...
I give you permission, so go ahead.
We gave it to principals and say, you figure it out based on your master's schedule. Do we need to look at that with more intentionality? Part of what I would also say to you, so that's why we've had variation in schools. Not every school has 600 kids with art, but some schools do. The other part is, when we did the removal of the early closing Monday, there was some work done to try to give some more Triple T. When I've come back, and I wasn't around for that, but when I came back, what principals said is, well, as part of the exchange, we got a little bit more Triple T, but not enough to cover everything we needed to do. Not enough to do world languages, not enough to do art. So this is another one of those in tight budget times. Did we hold Triple T as a staffing piece too tight and gave too many Sophie's Choices for elementary principals to try to decide, am I giving my art enough support? Am I giving my music enough support? And I want to say something other broadly, too. The 6 million for staffing initiatives, as I said back when I presented the budget in January, that's opening the door back to looking at staffing that we have cut over the last 10 years that has impacted our schools. I wanted in the first two budgets to get back to catching up and getting our money right, our pay right, or at least back to being competitive. But we've also tinkered with staffing in ways that I think have hurt some of our schools. We have the Title I that we have to put an eye on, and we're in the middle of making sure what's going on with that. So I do think it is time to begin, whether we can do it all in one year, but begin a thoughtful conversation. Are the staffing formulas that we've set up in whatever it is, elementary, secondary, special ed, general ed, are they serving us well? Are they doing what they intended? Or have we made cuts over the last few years that have impacted the ability for schools to deliver programs or to support teachers in the way that we can? And Triple T, honestly, is probably an area that we need to take a deeper look at, and it's had an unintended consequence, that because we gave it to principals, they had to figure it out. They had to make their own tough choices, and in some cases, perhaps it's been too much on one particular teacher based on the way the formula comes out in a particular school.
Well, I know my three minutes is gone, but I didn't use it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't use it. I appreciate those comments, and I do look forward to being able to look at, look at that in our quest to implement one Fairfax and achieve the level of fidelity that we all want to see in FCPS. So I look forward to those discussions. But I did want to voice that concern because it came forward. Part, I heard it otherwise, but I also heard it in the public meeting. And I want folks to know that we're listening and that we're paying attention and addressing those concerns.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to follow Ms. Keys-Gamaro, because I do want to talk a little bit about the staffing formula at the high school level as well on, and I have posed a question, and I look forward to having the answer regarding staffing parity for our science teachers with what we're doing with our English teachers in, at the high school level. Because there seems to be a difference in what those numbers are, and so I pose that as a question. I look forward to having a better understanding of that. Second, I really appreciate, Ms. Pachek, your comments about the IAs. I would actually prefer having a follow-on motion of just, just on the IAs to address the, with intentionality, the salaries for IAs, similar to what we've done with our teacher scales. And that's what I alluded to earlier during this work session, and I hope that you'll support me with that. But I think it's really important that we have, as a system, a focus on how we're going to address those, those scales. One additional area that I want to bring my colleagues' attention to is, I have asked some questions about our funding for the Young Scholars Programs, because it seems like, I don't know where the funding has gone for that. Over time, we have decreased funding for young scholars when we should be looking at focusing on young scholars as an opportunity to realize the one Fairfax objectives. And so I have asked some questions about that as well, and I will be coming back to my colleagues with that.
All right, Mr. McElveen.
Thank you. And I did want to clarify that that 6 million included the world language piece. The, you know, and I appreciate Dr. Braybrand's comments just now on Triple T. As we raised at our work session, I think we need to get back to the point where the board has set standards at all schools so that there's equity across the district in terms of those specials offerings. And, you know, we saw when we tried to expand Full Day Mondays, that the way we tried to do that previously did not work, and so we have to reinvest that money, and that is it.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up very briefly. Ms. Pachek has sent me an answer that she did get on a question on living wage, which somehow I had missed. I don't see parent liaisons on there. Are no, do we not have any parent liaisons who are under the living wage?
We don't have any parent liaisons that are under the living wage.
We don't, okay. And no IAs, then? So the category here, okay, I'm looking at the categories. It's, okay. Well, and with that, I will simply say that, once again, that I'm very pleased in this budget that we are completing the, putting parent liaisons, giving benefits to parent liaisons that work 20 hours or more. So I very much appreciate you putting this in that budget. Thank you.
Ms. Pachek, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just a very quick question regarding the $6 million. It sounds lovely. I was wondering if we could maybe get more clarity on what parts of it, unless we already have, and I missed it, what parts of it are already assigned to specific initiatives? Or at this point, it's all open to any of that list of initiatives?
It is a placeholder for the board. I provided some ideas in the budget. What, and I, maybe I'm being too candid, but, you know, here goes. What, what I'm hoping happens through this is you all get your budget questions and cost them, is what's your menu, right? 6 million is the account. That's what's in the account, and what's in the menu, and then prioritizing, how do we fit these items in the menu up to 6 million? And like, I heard Ms. Heinz talk, hey, AARTE's great to do an AARTE in every school. Have we already costed that out?
$6.3 million.
So to do it in every school, boom, boom, that's 6 million, well, there, there's all your staffing. If you did it at Title I, starting with that equity lens first, it's like 1.3.
1.6.
1.6, excuse me, Mr. Smith.
So then, I guess I have a budget, a process question. I mean, this is different and exciting compared to what we've had in the past, which is more menu of cuts.
We've never had this in the past, so...
Are we doing separate, because if we all start coming up with separate motions, amendments, we're not really sure how it's adding up.
Well, that is the challenge, and that's why we're here. And I think there are going to have to be some conversations between us. And I still think, and that's why I just pointed out to Ms. Evans, I think, you know, it may not all be finished this week. I mean, that would be lovely, and we could all agree on everything, and we could all, but there is the outstanding amount, like Ms. Heinz pointed out, of the governor's budget and where we are, you know, so, but I think, you know, I think that's a good question, Ms. Pachek. And I think what we, as an entity, have to do is we have to talk to the individuals who are being impacted by this, making sure that they're good with our thought process as far as the potential amendments we're making, and then, you know, talk with each other and see where we are. It's not going to be, you know, clean and tight next week, but it's going to be close, so we'll, we'll see. We'll see where we end up. And I think, yeah, it's, it's not where we've ever been. I mean, I think, you know, we're all excited because of the potential of the second year with a fully funded budget, and we're excited to have, we're very hungry because we have not had these opportunities. So not only are we going to be able to fulfill our promise, which we promised to our teachers four and a half, five years ago almost at this point, we're getting to that point where we're our competitive market, and then we actually have the opportunity, like, should we be the market leader and to what event, and to what extent? And how will these other things fit in? And I think as we have discussions, I hope we're, I know we all will be very respectful of each other because we each have our priorities and passions, but 6 million is, can go like that. So we'll, you know...
One thing we're going to do very hard is to answer those questions, as you know, Ms. Burden sent you today. We've done many. We still have many to do. Many came in in just the last day or two. We're going to work night, day, weekend, to get it all to you. And what I do hope can happen, though, as Ms. Darnak Kofax was saying, we should be able to know the total amount of amendments that you bring next week and what the cost is for those totals. So kind of right out of the gate, you'll know whether your ask are twice as much, about the same, or there's still even a little bit more room to tinker. And we just don't know that yet based on, you know, part of it may determine, like, how high do you want to take the floor for the living wage and the cost to do that? So those are the things that I think really are going to be going on next week, and we'll try to make sure we have all the costs so you can really fill out your menu as best as possible.
Dr. Bray...
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I'm just wondering for tools. I know in the past, when we were looking at the other side, the cuts, we had that very helpful budget tool that, with the menus. So I don't know if we're able to get to that point where we can kind of tinker. It was really just an Excel document that had a pull-down of all the different costs. So that would be helpful for...
Well, we might be able to have all the amendments and the cost to that, and then let you be able to pull in and out amendments and see how that number gets to 6. Maybe, we'll have to talk about that. Maybe that's something we, we could do. I don't know. I need to, I need to take them out to dinner after this and then let you know tomorrow. But I get it, right, in a way, it is. It's a sea change from thinking about how we're going to cut something to talk about how we're going to build on something and give the board the opportunity to really put signature passions that, from listening to the community, from listening to the staff, into the budget. And so I'm glad that we created this this year, and I want to thank Ms. Darnak Kofax and Ms. Strauss for giving the administration the support and the vision about going this way, so that at this time, you all are getting to do something that you really haven't been able to do in a long time, which is create together, collaborate together, listen to your stakeholders, and really add value to the budget after the superintendent has sent a proposed budget forward. So, thank you.
And I can add that, once we get the amendments in and we can get that costing, we can certainly turn that tool around so that board members can manipulate and do some things. So the sooner we get the amendments, the sooner we get the questions, the sooner we get the amendments, and the sooner we can turn that tool around.
The sooner we get the responses.
We are, we are working actively, and I just approved many today that will be posted. So I have to applaud budget staff, and actually all of our staff, because we're all working to ensure that we get you those questions. We understand the importance. And so everyone in our departments, they're, they're working. We have people working on those answers as we speak.
Thank you, Ms. Pachek, and for that question, and Dr. Braybrand and Mr. Smith. I do think, I know how hard you're working, and I appreciate that you will be working this weekend to get us answers to these questions, because some of us want to make sure we're, we're adding value-added amendments given, you know, but we don't know all the answers yet. So, Ms. Heinz?
Yeah, just quickly, yeah, Ms. Pachek, thank you for bringing that up, because I have started to realize that this is different. Usually, at this point in the process, I am loath to make any changes until we know what our revenue picture is. But you've given us this opportunity, right? And so I think actually, in addition to the amendment that I'm talking about with Ms. Darnak Kofax for the 1.6 million for ARTs in Title I schools, I think I will go ahead and put together an amendment for the three Get to Green full-time positions, and I'll have that out to my colleagues. I'm assuming it will be less than a half a million dollars. And I, I think those positions are really important. There are things that we're kind of cobbling together now, so there may actually be savings, because I know that we're paying for a resource teacher now, and so I think there would be some savings by replacing that. And when we talk about, you know, our student achievement goals and project-based learning and, you know, all the wonderful things that Get to Green is doing, it just, it seems like it's, it's definitely in that category of staffing that we have been putting on hold for a while that we really want to be doing. So I hope you all will look forward to that.
I like that. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. Dr. Braybrand, thank you for bringing up the issue of, we are still backfilling holes that we had to create during the recession. And staffing formulas, particularly at the middle and the high school, we have not gone back to fix yet. And that has, we've, we've raised those class sizes several times. Just wanted, a little bit of background on Triple T. Triple T has been around for maybe 30 years in Fairfax County. And one of the advantages of putting what we feel are core curriculum, the arts, PE, world language, putting into Triple T, it provides planning time during the day for teachers, and that was why it was originally invented. And as, in the last, particularly in the last 10 years, if you watch across the nation, how other school divisions were losing their art, their PA, all of those other positions, we were able to hang on to ours, partly because how we staff Triple T is seen as, as a plus for all the schools. Classroom teachers support it because it gives them the planning time, and those of us who believe that the arts and PE and world language should be part of the core, we believe in it, too. But it has been a mechanism that is seen as useful to everyone in an elementary school, and therefore, we did not lose all of those curriculum areas like some other school divisions did. So there are true benefits to Triple T. But it's good. We need to go back and take a look at all of that and see what the teacher load is. At the high school level, there are more state regulations on class load for high school teachers teaching individual classes, and it is, it is a different look. But again, looking across the board at staffing, teacher load, teacher requirements, if we can go back in and continue to put back in, it was well over $500 million that we took out of our, of our base budget, and it hurt hard. We still have catch-up to do with that. Thanks.
All right. With that, I, I don't see any more questions. And thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you, staff, for working hard to get us to this point, and I know you'll be working hard this weekend. And I will leave you with the wisdom of Mr. Moon. He said 6 million divided by 12 is 500,000 each. So work together in four monies, in the spirit of camaraderie. All right, and with that, this, this, yeah, this work session is complete. Thank you all.